This is a special meeting, April 27, 2020. We're starting at 6:31 in the evening at the Senior Center. It's just me and Slickman Pelton here, and the rest of our board is accessing by Zoom. We'll just do a quick roll call. I see Mike Hernandez.
Present.
And Jim?
Present.
And Mike Pelton?
Here.
And Ralph?
Here.
Lou?
Here.
And I think we're missing Rick so far. And for the Board of Education, I see we have Superintendent O'Reilly, and we have Charles Britton. Is that correct?
Correct.
Looks different on Zoom, Charles. And for the Board of Ed, we have Mr. Lavoy. And so far, that's it. If we get four more members, Tim, it'll be a Board of Education meeting.
I think I see Sharon on there, but I'm not sure.
Sharon is here, too.
I see her name on the list.
On the phone, but not on video.
We're just going to have to be careful in terms of when you speak. You're going to need to identify yourself because I think I may be the only one taking minutes. Is there anybody taking minutes from our recording secretary, Kevin?
Not on now.
And we're taping the meeting, correct? So the minutes will be taken from the tape. I see Sharon is here. I see Meg Scutta. Oh, there's Rick Sharr.
Hello.
Any other Board of Education besides Tim, Meg, and Sharon? I'm sure we'll be joined in a few. Okay. The second item on the agenda is the Community Development Block Grant Small Cities Program. And the first item is approval of the Section 3 Plan. Many of these exhibits are required items for the Small Cities Grant that we are applying for, and this is the Homelessness Prevention Grant that we're applying for along with our Coordinated Access Network. We will be hopefully able to better serve homeless youth as well as homeless adults. So we had sent these items forward to you previous to the meeting. So is there a motion to approve the Section 3 Plan from the Board of Selectmen?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Section 3 Plan as provided.
Would you please just identify yourself, Jim? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike Pelton. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next is the Citizen Participation Report and Plan. Excuse me. Is there a motion to approve the Citizen Participation Plan?
Sure. This is Jim. I'll make a motion that we approve the Citizen Participation Plan as provided.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Who's that?
Rick.
Rick Sharr. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next is the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistant Plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistant Plan.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike Pelton. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Carries. Thank you. Assurances? Is there a motion to approve?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve the local assurances, Exhibit G5, as provided.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Rick.
Thank you, Rick. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And the last is the Declaration of April as the Fair Housing Month. It's a proclamation. Is there a motion to approve April as our Fair Housing Month?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve April as Fair Housing Month. Would you like me to read the proclamation or just?
Sure. Go ahead, Jim.
All right. Whereas April 2020 marks the 52nd anniversary of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, known as the Civil Rights Fair Housing Act, and whereas this act provides equal housing opportunity for all Americans regardless of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, as well as to ensure fair practice in the sale, rental, or financing of property, and whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and strengthened its enforcement procedures, and whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act seeks to provide equal housing opportunities to affirmatively further housing choices, to eliminate legal barriers to good, to equal housing, and to emphasize equal housing as a fundamental human right for all, and whereas recipients of refunds from the town must carry out an affirmative marketing program to attract prospective buyers or tenants of all majority and minority groups without consideration of race, color, religion, sex, disability, age, gender, gender identity, rather, familial status, or national origin, and whereas the town of Portland, Connecticut fully supports the intent and purpose of the Federal Fair Housing Act, local fair housing laws, and follows practices, policies, and practices in order to achieve its goal. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Susan S. Bransfield, First Selectwoman of the Town of Portland, Connecticut, to signify our appreciation, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2020 as Fair Housing Month, and witness whereof I do set my hand and cause the seal of Portland to be affixed this 27th day of April in the year 2020. It is signed, would be attested to by Susan S. Bransfield, Bransfield, First Selectwoman, Town of Portland, Connecticut, and also noted to Portland Board of Selectmen Michael S. Hernandez, Louis J. Pear, Michael A. Pelton, Edward J. Sharr Jr., James K. Tripp, and Ralph R. Zampano.
Thank you. The motion's been made. Is there a second?
Ralph, what second? Nope. Neither me or Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item, number three, is adoption of the water and sewer budgets. Now, we had gone over this in previous meetings with the Selectmen, and our town charter requires that the water and sewer budgets be approved before May 1 of every year. So it's on tonight's agenda for your consideration. Is there a motion to approve the water budget?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution dated April 27, 2020, adoption of the water and sewer budgets for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Resolve that the water and sewer budgets for the fiscal year 2020 and 2020 to 2021, as outlined on the attached, in the amount of $1,561,995 in the water budget and $1,166,370 in the sewer budget, be and are hereby adopted.
Motion's been made by Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Rick Sharr seconded. Discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. And now we are going to move on to item number four, which is the Departmental Budget Workshop portion of our meeting. In the first item under revenues, I wanted to call your attention to that section of your budget, which will be found on pages five, six, and seven of the general fund budget. As a brief review of revenues that are estimated for next year, you'll see on page five, the property taxes that are listed here are based on the budget that was presented March 2nd, Based on the rest of the revenues, there will be consideration as to how the Selectmen will determine the tax rate for next year. Tom Robinson had given me a comparison, and he was guesstimating, estimating not $28,665,389, but rather his suggestion is $28,995,389. So he is suggesting an increase in the mill rate. And as we proceed, I'll explain the reason. The next item is prior year taxes. No recommended changes. Interest in liens, no recommended changes. Supplemental motor vehicle, no changes, but the total would change from $29,381,389 to Now, this is suggestion, but it's something for your consideration in the workshop. The next item does not change. As far as we know, the Education Cost Sharing Grant, we're predicting would be $4,493,305. The pilots for state property, no change. No change in Pequot Mohegan, $2,900. Pilot for totally disabled tax relief, $550. No change. No change in emergency management, $2250. $2,700 for veterans exemption. All other revenues, State of Connecticut, $19,000. And the total for State of Connecticut General Government is $40,841. The next item, investment income. You'll remember, we talked about this at some of our other meetings, and our finance director is recommending that $130,000 be changed and be reduced to $50,000, based on the reduction of interest that is being earned at all levels. Onto page six. Pilot Housing Authority remains the same. I just need to compare, excuse me, compare these numbers and make sure I'm right. Yes. No change in telecommunication pilot. Property rental will be reduced from $522,800. We're proposing a, what actually may be a modest reduction of $250,000 reduction in that account. So instead of $522,800, it would be $272,800. That reduction is due to anticipated reductions in the Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park, but we also account for the money from Oak Hill in this account, which I believe Philip will be about $80,000 to $90,000?
It will be closer to 80, Susan.
Okay. $80,000. So the remaining amount would be our estimate of what we would get from property rental, but there is no guarantee on that. As you may know, the park will not open for May and June, and we do get revenue this year for May and June. That will not happen. Sean Hayes told me that there are no schools that have planned trips. He ordinarily would have a lot of college and high school and other school groups coming in in the spring, park and rec groups, all kinds of groups. They have not scheduled. He will be opening the park, and it will be under Payroll Protection Program for his full-time employees. So he's fortunate to have been awarded the Payroll Protection Program, and he also is going to be getting some additional relief in the form of loans. So he's able to do some activity, but it remains an unknown as to how he can open in July and August, which are his busy months. But he's making a valiant effort to proceed. There are still some dollars that are due to us from his August and September income, and that amounts to about $70,000 that will be coming to us for this fiscal year. So this year was actually a good year, but without the revenue from May and June, of course, it will be less for this fiscal year 20, just to give you an update. So fiscal year 21 will be greatly reduced, we anticipate. Moving down miscellaneous finance, all the way down to the bottom of that page, we anticipate structural permits of $254,000. It's a slight reduction from what we anticipated for this year, but in speaking with Dan Bertram over the weekend, he does anticipate proceeding with the project at the old Elmcrest site, and he is waiting for the financing to come through. It's been promised to him, so he's happy to report that they will be proceeding in fiscal year 21. The bank, of course, is very busy with the coronavirus monies, the COVID-19 business, so he's waiting his turn, but he is committed to the construction. So that was good news. So the budget revenue on the next page, we don't anticipate any additional changes on that page. So the total general government and Board of Education revenue remains at $35,314,610. Of course, that'll depend on what the Selectmen ultimately determine. They will allocate for the budget, the operating budget, and other portions of the general government and Board of Education budget. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Susan, I just had one question on that last. The structural permits you had mentioned, right now it's estimated $254,000. You said it was going to be reduced to an amount. I didn't hear.
No. No. What I said, Lou, excuse me, I had said under fiscal year 2020. It is for this fiscal year estimated at $360,000, but for next year, the anticipated and estimated revenue is $254,000. That is what had been recommended originally. There's no change to that from what the budget was March 2nd, when I issued it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou.
So I think it's just, I know you were reading, so I'm not sure if you noticed, but we do now have four members of the Board of Education.
Who joined tomorrow? Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Susan, I have a question.
Yes.
I didn't add this up, but I guess, is it safe to assume that you increase the estimated revenue, the very first line on page five, and then is the corresponding decrease because of rental property why we come up with the same $35,314 on page?
Balance each other. They should balance.
They should balance each other? Okay. That was my question.
Because, Rick, if you increase revenue from taxes, you've decreased the other revenue. So it's being made up for because the estimated expenditures haven't changed.
Okay. And then on the investment income, did you drop, it dropped from 130 to 50?
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
I don't know if Tom Robinson is on the call. Is he available?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, there was a drop in, you know, we were, when we initially started this, I think we were up in the twos on this money, and evolved when we started putting all this together, and now, you know, they dropped the interest rates down to, I think, stiffs down at a .8 or so, and then other, and stiff is usually the highest, and so then Stif and Webster around the same, and more and more of the other banks are below that. So if you look back into where we, you know, generated revenue in previous years, when the rates fell, you know, in those points, those point numbers, we were much less, we were, you know, we were in the $40,000 range or so like that. 18, the rates increased pretty good. That was a big jump in the rates in 18. 19, we had the $10 million bond unspent, so we had $10 million of interest that we're, as well as the interest rates were very strong, around over 2, about 195 to somewhere between 2.4 to 3, you know, and now you're, you know, somewhere in the .8, 2.4 range. So that's a very large drop, as well as you don't have the $10 million anymore. We spent the majority of that down. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Tom. This is Mike Pelton. I have a question for you. With regards to the overall property taxes, two questions. One, have you seen any reduction or delay in property tax payments during this whole COVID thing? And do you anticipate any impact going forward on that?
Obviously, it's very early in this process of how we've seen it. We have, the town has very strong collections generally in July and August, as well as in January, February, so you do have a very strong collection rate before you get to where this really took a huge effect. So we did have strong collections from that point. This, you know, obviously it's hard because right now the town hall is not open to the outside, but they are still able to pay taxes via check and the taxes they're able to pay via the credit card system online. So, you know, people are paying as they need to. You know, will there be trouble in July and August? That remains to be seen. If we can, you know, get people, you know, if the country can get people back to work, you know, I think people will make payments, but if we can't, then, you know, those are things that we'll have to see when they come around and when the, you know, the guidance that we get from the state and the federal government of what we need to do. So I don't know if I can really predict that. We will see, obviously, we'll see a little bit of a reduction in our interest receipts for those 90 days as we collect at a lower interest rate factor based upon the low-interest program that we create, we establish here, the board's established. So we'll have a little bit issue there, but if they don't pay within the 90 days, then it reverses back to the 18%. So it appears that the mortgage companies are still being required to pay, so that's a large, large number that they hopefully will hit in July. So that's, you know, we'll continue to monitor those as they go on.
Thanks, Tom.
I will point out, since we're talking about taxes, that the increase to meet the expenditures is 1.25 mils. So that equivalent of the $28,995,389 would be raised by 1.25 mils. Any other discussion on revenues? Yes, Tim? You're raising your hand? I can't hear you.
I have a question, Susan.
All right. One minute, please.
Can we hear you, Tim?
Well, if you could unmute my phone. I'm logged in with my phone and...
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The 1.25 mils needed to pay for the budget, Susan, just so I understand, that's for the budget, that's for your recommended budget that you put forward?
Yes.
Or the 2.8 in the?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. That's due to, Tim, the reductions in the revenues from the other...
Right. Yeah. No, I just followed that loosely.
Rick Sharr, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a question maybe for you or Tom. If we have a severely reduced tax collection come July, August, do we have enough reserves in our rainy day fund to, you know, cover our ongoing expenses?
Tom, do you want to comment on that?
So going back to what I previously said, I, you know, believe that the way that so far the executive orders have come out, that the mortgage companies are going to be required to pay, that will be a large influx of money into the town. We, if that was kind of, we don't want to, you know, I think we'll have enough funding in there. If, again, if the mortgage companies pay, we do have cash flow to a point. Obviously, there are some debt payments that are due in the early part of the year, so those take a burden, but, you know, we should have the operating flow for July, definitely. It's hard because you don't have, we don't, you know, that's why for us it's important to get payments in July and early August because, you know, although our percentage of fund balance is strong, it's just not a lot of cash because we don't have a, it's just not, it's not a large balance. Our budget's not a large budget to where you have an excessive amount of cash, as you may see in the bigger municipality.
Does that answer your question, Rick?
Well, sort of. I mean, I just want to make sure we don't get into a situation where we can't pay our bills, but I guess nobody knows. I mean, you can't, we don't have a crystal ball.
Right.
I think the other part of Rick's question was the rainy day fund. Where are we with that? How would that position us where we, if we utilize some of that, that cuts some of that mill rate down and doesn't leave us with no... mil rate down and doesn't leave us with no, with no rainy day fund?
Well, we have approximately 19% of our current budget in the rainy day fund, and that is approximate, it's over $6 million. But I don't have the exact numbers with me tonight.
But we've, you know, obviously this current budget, we've allocated, we've budgeted a usage of 300,000. We've budgeted capital, supplemental appropriation of 615,000 for capital, therefore that's a utilization of 915,000. And then the fiscal 20 budget is utilization of 300,000 to balance the budget already. So I don't think that that would be a position, place that you'd want to go to balance the budget because if, again, you don't know if cash, if cash doesn't come in or some other wave of this hits, we would like to have that reserve on hand to, to cover either a shortfall if another wave hits or any other crises were to occur. So...
One at a time, please. Tom, could you finish?
I'm finished.
All right. Tim, did you want to speak?
Well, I just wanted to, again, it's Tim LaVoy. I wanted to just understand, trying to do the math, Tom, quickly. So does it look like 2 million of that 600, of that 6 million has been committed over this year to cover the deficit and then the 600,000 for the capital expenses? And then you made another number, and I think it added up to about 2 million. Is that right?
600,000, Tom, was not included in the 6 million, correct?
So as of June 30th, 90, the other side of fund balance was 6.6 million dollars. The 300,000, which was assigned for the next year's budget, was not part of that. So the, the complete fund balance in the general fund was 7.119 million, of which there was commitments of 173 for other purposes, 300 was the assigned for next year's, which is fiscal 20 budget. So then of the, of the 6.6, 600,000 would be utilized of that 6.6, so that gets you down to about 6. And then you do, you're going using 3 of next year, so there were 5.7. And that's the general fund, which then you, you have to take the water and sewer deficits and negate, and take those against that budget because those need to be taken against that. And the deficits of 619 of those were 747,000 and 511,000. So, you know, I think, I think with the 300,000 that we utilize is a reasonable use. And I think that's what we want to do.
We don't have the year ending for this year yet either. That should be pointed out.
If I could, one more question, Tim LaVoy again. The, it's a 19%, our rainy day fund is about 19% of our operating budget. And what's, what's the recommendation for that fund to be in it? Like, I mean, obviously as much as you can have, but just like a minimum, right? That they, you should have at least X in order to look good on your balance sheet?
I mean, one rule of thumb that we have learned is up to three months of your operating expenditures. Another would be anywhere, I think many towns, I can just speak from what I know from other towns, is between 10 and 15%. Other parts of the country, besides Connecticut, they're much higher. And when your rating agencies look at your fund balance, they take into account that it's Connecticut, which operates a little differently fiscally than some other counties and states. So we are, we are in a good place. We're not the best, but we're in a very good place for our fund balance, and we don't want to disturb that.
Right.
That is an important part of our financial status. Tom, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think you hit most of that on top of the head. Yeah, I think the only thing was when we do look at the bond rating agencies, they do look national. So, you know, so they're looking at like a 30% number. So sometimes with us, we, we mark as well, but in Connecticut, we mark it at a reasonable level, to the higher side. But, you know, that, I think we make sure that we have, I think our policy has at least 8% that we have as our minimum, but I mean, that's, you know, you want to have much more than that. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Susan, it's Rick.
Yes, Rick.
This is kind of for Tom. He mentioned, he mentioned $300,000, which I, is that the 300,000 that you added to the estimated revenue? Was that coming from our fund balance or was that just on a projected increase in the mill rate? Tom mentioned something about, I thought I heard him say 300,000 when he was addressing Tim. So I'm just trying to follow.
So annually, we utilize the $300,000 to balance our budget. That's in the actual calculation every year when we do it. So that's a, there's a $300,000 utilization of fund balance annually.
Wow, okay.
We don't, I want to point out that many years we have not had to use that because of management of reduction in expenditures. Also, we've had very good collection rates. The collection rate is predicted in this budget to be 98.5, and we have hit that or been better for many years. What we don't know is going forward, if that collection rate will still occur. So there is an adjustment in your budget. If you look at page three of your general fund budget, the proposed calculation of the mill rate is based on your budget less your direct revenue estimates, which is typically your state and other fees, state grants and other fees. So your net budget becomes, at least on the original budget that I sent out, 28,965,389. Then there's the predicted appropriation of fund balance of the 300,000, which then brings you down to 28,665,389. The adjustment that's there for 436,529, you'll see the asterisk that's related to our reserve for uncollected taxes. So we're predicting within this budget that we will not collect 436,529, which brings your amount to be raised to 29,101,917. So you can see from this calculation that if you're successful in getting closer to 100% of your taxes, then you're going to do much better and you may not need that allocation, particularly if you have a reduction in expenditures of that 300,000. And our collection rate has been good. Nancy Dejere Alamo, our collector of revenue, does an outstanding job. And so we've been very fortunate that our taxpayers pay their taxes, but we have to allocate for an adjustment. In this coming year, we don't have the number, but you might predict that you will be short some dollars going forward based on the unemployment figures that are very high right now. So then the proposed mill rate, at least for March 2nd, 2020, was 34.66. The adopted mill rate for the current year is 3381, which resulted in a proposed increase of... Thank you. Did you hear that? Sharon Hoy, do you have any, any way of having Sharon acknowledge? No, Sharon Hoy is, is taking minutes. Yes. She had, she texted me and said she's taking minutes. So I just want to be sure that she hears that Chris Darby and David Murphy are joining us at 7:11, and at 6:50, Laurel Steinhauser joined us. So back to that page one explanation, 0.85 mil rate increase was about a 2.5% increase in the mill rate. So if you're changing that based on your current expenditures in the budget, your mill rate could go to 1.25 mils, and that would be a 3.69% increase in the mill rate. That's based on your current expenditures as of March 2nd. Any questions on that page? Okay, we're going to go forward again. If you're ready to leave revenues, and we'll go on to Board of Education. I'll turn it over to Sharon Peters.
Hello.
Hi, Sharon.
I think Dr. O'Reilly had sent over some documents and was prepared to answer any questions. I don't know, I know some of you were on the line for our special meeting the Board of Ed had last Thursday evening. It's that same information that we went over then in terms of making some changes to our budget as had originally been proposed to the town. So I would, if there are questions, I, or if Dr. O'Reilly, if you wanted to talk a little bit about those documents.
Sure. So, yes, Board of Selectmen members, all of you should have received, received an email from me that documented the special meeting of the Board of Education last Thursday evening. That meeting occurred as a result or after a phone meeting that happened between the Board of Ed Chair, Susan, Tom Robinson, Stephanie Fergola, who is my business assistant, and myself. And one of the things that, that everybody is struggling with is, is answers to questions about what school would look like in the new, new year, let alone whether, how it's going to look for the remainder of this year, but also what it's going to look at the beginning of, of the 2021 school year. And Susan kept referencing possible scenarios or that we have to build some ideas based on scenarios that could occur. Now, we don't know what's going to happen. So I angsted, as I explained to the Board of Ed, I angsted greatly over putting out numbers that really didn't have any, any particular meaning now, but I did feel like I wanted to make sure that the Board of Education, and now you, Board of Selectmen, understand that there are implications to these, these potential changes that could occur with our budget. And the only way, I didn't want to do it by scenario because we don't know what the scenarios are going to look like, but I wanted to do it in what I call a levels or tiers. I called it on the worksheet, levels. And so you'll see there are three different levels of intervention, if you will, should various scenarios occur, would significantly change public education in the coming year. And so that, the first page of the multi-page document, and Kevin, I don't know if you have it available to put up. I know you talked about me sharing, but I wonder if you can put it up on the screen, and that's the, the document that lists out Level 1, Potential Cost Savings. This is a topic that a lot of us have been talking about, and, and this is the means by which the Board of Education would meet, potentially meet Susan's recommended 2.8 budget. And so I just want to pause there so that everybody sees it. And on the left-hand column, each item is listed, and then in the middle column, this, it's the savings or potential savings. Thank you, Kevin. So there, there you see how the Board of Ed could, could operate next year's budget and meet Susan's recommended 2.8% budget. And I'm going to pause there right now because I'm sure there would be questions. I want to underscore, these are potential savings and very much in flux between now or what will occur between now and, and June 30th, when our fiscal year ends. Any questions on that first document?
Philip, I'll ask one. Good evening, by the way, and thank you for sending these over. I know that in some other discussions, I know there's some stuff that's going on right now. I look at the numbers, I know one of the numbers that's not in here is if there's going to be any savings associated with the regular busing. I know that there's a couple of busing categories regarding transportation for, from a homeless and special education. But what about the, I know there's a negotiation, I guess, going on?
Yes.
For the, for the governor's executive order? Is there a status on that?
Yeah. If you look over to the far right under notes, where it has the 24,513 number?
Yeah.
That's purely a Philip O'Reilly estimate. That is assuming that we would pay 80% of our home-to-school delivery transportation costs. That would mean our 10 or 11 large buses, we have a couple of special education buses, and we also have some preschool transportation buses as well. So that would pay, that would mean that we would, we would be successful in negotiating a deal with M&amp;J where they, they gave back to us, if you will, 20% of what is agreed upon in the contract. It's purely an estimate on my part that we're going to, to be at that point. And as I reported to the Board of Ed, there are very few districts that, and, no, let me rephrase that, this, there are no districts that I know of, as recently as today, that have negotiated with our bus company about a reduction in the home-to-school delivery of children, transportation of children. We're all in the process of it, so that, that 20% is really a very, an estimate on my part. But I wanted to give a sense that, you know, we were at least looking at it. That answer your question, Jim?
Yeah, it does, it does. I just, I'm thinking back to that executive order that basically indicated that the goal would be to cover employee salaries and benefits. I'm just trying to, just in my own mind, I guess, I'm just curious if there's any validation or in that negotiation. Are they sharing sort of what their cost basis is?
Not yet.
There's savings to them to not have to operate the buses, there's, you know, there's a bunch of savings there, and I'm trying to figure out, knowing what our contract is, if, if their, if their salaries and benefits are 80% of it. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So we don't know that, so you can't figure it out yet, Jim.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to, to come to some understanding. I'm being driven by two things. One is my, I want to make sure that our bus drivers and our management and those people that are associated in contract do receive their base salary. Now, we got to, we understand that it, that many of our drivers reach beyond base salary because they also drive for sports transportation or special events and all these field trips that occur. We're talking about base salary, they're, again, home-to-school delivery and back again. And then the second piece is, is to live within the guidelines that the, that the governor has set up, and that is the responsibility to the, to the towns and the municipalities not to make these, these amended contracts overly fruitful for the bus company, for their, for the bus company. We don't want them to make any money on, on municipalities' expense.
Thank you.
I have a question, Dr. O'Reilly.
I have a question, Dr. O'Reilly, it's Rick Scharr.
Hi Rick.
Hi. On this scenario here on page one, is this assuming that we don't reopen the schools?
No, no.
Or no?
No, so it's a good question. So the answer to your directly is no, this assumes they're going to open up right away. What it does assume, Rick and the rest of the Board of Selectmen, and I'll now pivot to that other document, is that we are going to be able to reallocate those savings from the 1920 fiscal year to, toward a number of items that have been budgeted in the 2021 that could potentially save the 2021. That's what allows us, Rick, to reduce the Board of Ed's budget of 3.83 that they arrived at in late March or early April. And that, and then to move from 3.83 to Susan's 2.80. So that's what it assumed. That Level 1 assumes that we're going to be able to meet Susan's budget and that the Board of Selectmen approves Susan's budget and we would obtain savings from the current fiscal year to allocate towards those, a number of items that would be taken out of the fiscal 2021 budget. So if you pivot to the other worksheet, Rick, the one that's multicolored, orange and blue or bluish-green.
Okay, I got it.
So the orange part just talks, shares all we got from the original budget, 4.46 to the 3.83. That was an adjustment made in March. And then the blue section, the blue-green section documents those savings, how we would apply those savings towards those budgeted items in, for the 2021. So sightlines, for instance, that 36-4 number is the report that we hope, the Buildings and Grounds Report on each of the five buildings. Soccer goals are self-explanatory, environmental control systems are service contracts. Chromebooks would be something that we would purchase this fiscal year and not purchase next fiscal year. And on down the line there.
Okay, I see that.
Those items would literally taken out of the Board of Ed's approved budget and the savings from this current year would be used to expend towards those.
And if I could just interrupt for a second, Philip, those numbers are based upon an assumption that school would be done through distance learning through the end of this school year, correct?
Thank you for clarifying that. So that is Rick. What Sharon just said is very important. So if you go back to that other document where your original question, that assumption is based on, those savings are end-of-the-year savings to June 30th if we do distance learning.
So that, I'm sorry, I lost the video portion here. I don't, can you still hear me?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So you're saying on that first page, we started talking about where you have a total of $298,029?
Yeah.
That's additional savings?
Those are just.
Are potential, yes.
Potential savings that we would incur if school was distance learning for the remainder of the school year and that we didn't resume our traditional regular classroom instruction.
Okay.
Because for instance, Rick, the athletic line, we still don't have the determination whether or not spring sports will occur in some way. Those, there are certain questions that haven't been answered.
All right. Okay, I guess you've satisfied my questions for the moment, thank you.
So I want to move on to, if I may, to Kevin, to the next two documents that break down what I call Level 2 and Level 3, which are far more severe in their impact, obviously, because they would represent cuts. And those are the three potential positions, 1.0 FTE positions, kindergarten teacher at Valley View, socialized teacher at the high school and a library media specialist. It would not need terminations or furloughs or any unemployment costs because these positions are unfilled now because these positions are, have a teacher who has resigned or retired, or the kindergarten teacher in essence could be a, could be an opening for us that would be a natural occurrence when we increased the class size. So it's a little hard to share with you, but we did budget for a kindergarten teacher for the coming year because we anticipate we're going to have six sections of first grade and potentially six sections of kindergarten. And then there's been some discussions about whether or not the Year 1 Mentor for Dr. Britton, that cost would be removed. And then also potential for redesigning the Director of Curriculum position for one year to be a 10-month position. So again, these, as we increase levels, they become, you know, a little bit more consequential to the operation and smooth operation of our school district and of our ability to meet our needs. And speaking of meeting our needs, that is a very large question mark, ladies and gentlemen. We don't know what we will face in September. We don't have an understanding yet about the compensatory education requirements that our students will need. We'd like to assume that our students are getting everything they need now, but we don't know what that will be like, nor do we know what their social-emotional needs will be like as we transition back in and after possible five months away from school. So this complicates it even more a little bit. So I'm going to move to Level 3. You see the change in color at the top because it becomes even more severe. And the changes in personnel and programs that could occur if we had to reduce even more from our budget. And/or this one factors in what potential scenarios that could occur. Say for instance, we began the school year in September and had to go to distance learning for two months when the second round of COVID came through. Well, maybe there would be some options for eliminating stipends or furloughing certain employees on a very minimal rate or that we would reduce other positions for other scenarios that could come about. Again, I'm not advocating these, the board isn't advocating these, but we needed to demonstrate to you that we do understand that there would be significant challenges to the school and the school district and the operation of the school district in the coming, in the coming school year if these cuts were made.
I just want to interject real quick. I don't want anyone to feel as though they aren't able to speak. If you have been muted for whatever reason and need to talk, just please communicate to me via the chat so I can include you. And thank you.
Including Stephanie Fergola, if she has anything to add, if I've missed anything or any of my administrative team who may be here. So Board of Selectmen, do you have any other questions about these particular documents as they pertain to our proposed budget?
I just have a couple, Jim Trapp. Would the, on what you called Level 2? The library media specialist, I know we had, was there retirement or did I?
Yes.
Yeah, I was trying to, okay. Where was that retirement from?
Brownstone.
Brownstone, thank you, I was just curious. And.
Jim, that by the way is, and that hits me perhaps the hardest, Jim, and you will remember how much I advocated for a library media specialist in each of the buildings. So to go backwards on some of these things would be challenging.
No, actually, I remember, I remember all those conversations, yeah. And then the other question I had was, I know you commented about the kindergarten. I'm just curious, how are the signups for kindergarten going so far? Are we tracking? For example, one of the things I'm curious about with all of the swirl that's going on, are we going to, do we anticipate seeing the same number of signups? Or if kids are on the edge, do we think parents are going to, you know, still put them in this year? I'm just going to feel for how signups are going, I guess.
Trying to determine or to follow any kind of norm, past norm relative to kindergarten registration obviously has been difficult. You know, by this time, we would already have the in-person meet and greet with every parent and their potential kindergarten student and the staff at Valley View or certain staff in Valley View. That hasn't occurred yet, members. We have, we had a estimate of registrants in the 60s before we broke, but I, which would mean, you know, if we remained at 60, we wouldn't need that extra kindergarten teacher. But we've also seen year after year, late registrations that have brought that number up significantly. And as a kindergarten teacher who was at the Board of Ed meeting so adeptly spoke about last week, you know, there's nothing better for young learners than small class sizes.
I think there's also a question as to whether the registrations are coming in slower considering the current atmosphere and issues with schools being closed. So I think that's also an unknown.
No, I was just curious how they were tracking.
And, you know, we begin, if you look at, you don't get our enrollment report, but if you look at the September enrollment report and compare it to the March enrollment report, you'll see a significant increase in the number of Portland kids. And that's all students who reside in Portland. Virtually open choice doesn't change from September to June, other than to go down if some kids withdraw. But we don't accept new kids, new residents from Hartford after September, after school begins. So you'll see that somehow our enrollment always climbs back up to that number that we always have each year, the 1330, I think it is, number that. So it's amazing about, with the influx of kids in our town, up and down.
Philip, can I ask you another question? Just, I just want to make sure I understand these three sheets. So Sheet 1, if school doesn't resume in the buildings, there's a potential savings of what, that $298,000?
Yes.
Okay, but on Sheets 2 and 3, those reductions would be essentially like the Board of Ed baking of specific, sort of taking the hatchet, kind of to speak, to making these other cuts. They would be above and beyond, right, what Sheet 1 has.
Right.
More driven, so to speak, I guess.
And if you, for instance, lowered the budget from Susan's proposed 2.82% or 2.80%, we would have to go into these next two levels to find the funds for those cuts to meet a lower than right now proposed. Basically, the Board of Ed has said, and they all, every member concurred last week that they could, given the report of these potential savings, that they could meet Susan's proposed budget of 2.0, 2.80.
Okay. Well, it's, this is good information and I think you guys are to be commended for, you know, showing us this, all this detail. I would only ask one other thing, and it came up when we had that meeting a couple of weeks ago. When you do the study, you know, you were going to do a, I forgot what you, oh, the sightlines. I guess you're, I think that's what this line is, the 36,000 that we somehow can find out or have some study done is that, do we really need all the buildings that we operate? And I brought that up at that meeting, so the ones of you that were there, I just, I just hope that maybe.
Well, I think as we did talk about at that meeting, Rick, the way that the Board is looking at that sightline report is to give us a very clear understanding of what the needs are and the potential expenses of each of the buildings. It's just going to provide us with one part of the information that would be necessary to even begin to talk about that issue.
Okay, well.
Because I, you know, I think it's, one of the things that's going to, of course, play into the equation is, you know, if it's going to cost X number of dollars to get one of these buildings up to snuff in terms of, you know, major expenses, is there another option available? And I think that's a discussion for a larger group. This was proposed by Carl Johnson to get a very specific report as to the condition of each of the buildings and what we could expect going forward in terms of regular maintenance and major things that may be coming up.
I want to add one thing about the study as well because we talked to Carl Johnson very thoroughly about it. The buildings have been, you know, added on to over a period of many, many years. They were built and then we did additions and we've done upgrades and we've gone back and we've repaired things that might have been defective in the buildings when they were built. And at this point, with a new building maintenance administrator, just finding out what's going to fall apart next is a critical part of being able to know what we can anticipate. And we know from sprinkler things and boiler things and other things that fail, there are surprises and they, you know, take money out of places where we might have had some savings. So I think that the building survey is critical for where we are now and other discussion which relate to building, you know, building closures or whatever. It will help in that long run, so I think it needs to be done.
Meg, when would that be done? Like, when do you anticipate it? Like, if it's approved in the budget, when might that happen?
I think Philip can answer that better, but I would expect sooner rather than later. And Carl can answer that too.
So Carl, I'm on here if somebody wants me to say anything on that.
Let me just answer Rick's question, Carl, and then you can jump on if you have something. But Rick, that, the idea is that we would, we would secure the contract in this fiscal year and begin the process in this fiscal year and it wouldn't be part of the proposed budget for next year. That's, that's one of those green, one of those items on the green sheet where we would, that's how we meet Susan's budget.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All right?
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet.
Rick, did you have any questions for me on that? This is Carl.
Um. No, I think, I think I'm, 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 I'm good on that, Carl, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Phil, Philip, this is Ralph, hey, I got a question, um, it's with regards to, um, the level one and again back to the buses. So, um, I know you, and I know you're swagging a number, so I understand the nature of what you did in terms of trying to estimate what a savings might be for two months. But didn't we pay, I mean, it's essentially three months that are not used. I mean, I think you said you made a payment already for April, but you know, they haven't, buses haven't been moving since mid-March. So I'd be hard pressed to believe that we're gonna be charged from March to April at a full amount when they, they weren't doing services during that time.
Um, I agree with you and I'll just let Stephanie chime in because I think what we did when we did this number is that we assumed that we would get a credit on those, on those invoices that we prepaid. But we also, remember, we also didn't fully, there were certain pieces of the transportation, the monthly transportation that we did not prepay in March and April. So Stephanie, is there a, a clarifica, do we need to make, do I need to make any clarifications there?
Um, no, I think it's good with that because we don't know if, how they're gonna do it or if they're gonna do it as a pro rate, what we would pay through a certain amount. And then if there's a balance due, that's how we pay, like, that's what we do with the athletic trainer. Um, you know, we, they gave us a prorated amount of services they gave us and then we paid the difference of what was left in that point. At this point, with the proration, we could be under or over what that amount would be, I'm not sure. But in the amendment, I believe we were writing to them, they do know that we did pay through April and that that, i- if it's not done the way that, that would get credit back to us at somehow.
Okay, okay.
It just depends how, how the calculation gets done and I don't know, cause we haven't really had much conversation, you know, with them.
Yeah, I understand, I, I just was trying to ask that question because I knew obviously I was on the call, we're talking about it and talking about paying April ahead of time, so, okay.
Technically, it's, it should be from March sixteen through basically June sixteen, so that would be three months. But, you know, we did make that payment for April, two days after all this happened.
I, you know, Stephanie, Stephanie just said she, that we haven't had a lot of conversations, well, I have and, and I, you know. I, I, it's a negotiation process and so, yeah, I'm not gonna speak publicly about it, but I think the twenty percent, if you were, if you were M and J, the twenty percent number is an optimistic number on their part.
Sure. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Hello, this is Lou, uh, speaking.
Yes, Lou.
And I had a question on, I know it's on the last page, which is the page that we don't wanna go to. But just a, maybe philosophical question, is that if in fact the sixth graders were to move to the middle school. And that would be a savings of a, of a teacher, it looked like a one FTE. Would that mean that the students, let's say the, would it be the fourth graders, third graders? One grade of students from Gildersleeve would go to Brownstone, which would leave only one grade of students at Gildersleeve. And if that's the case, would those students, that, that grade of students be absorbed the space that's available at Valley View?
So, the answer to your question is, the way it's been presented there is the minimal savings that you could have if you move just sixth grade from Brownstone to, um, to the middle school. And, uh, no determination yet what kind of grade configuration you would have in, in the rest of the school district, Lou.
Okay.
And I say that because, and, and Rick, this is another benefit of this study group that, that would essentially form late this spring during the summertime. Because you could then determine, all right, we've made this transition for a cost-saving move and for educational purposes. Cause I, I do believe that people would like to see grade six as part of the middle school. Based on some of the conversations, many of the conversations I've had with parents. But there, there could then be subsequent discussion about, all right, which building's gonna remain open, which buildings are going to be used? And where are we going to, to put our grade? And so, yes, theoretically, you could move grade four up to Brownstone, um, school to make it a four, five. And you'd move potentially grade one out of Valley View to Gildersleeve to make it a one, two, three. And then you'd make Valley View a very, very successful early childhood center, which would be very exciting for this town. And a response to a growing need for kid, early childhood education and a focus on, on some of the special education programming that, that is necessary for, uh, many of our, our early learners, three through five. Valley View, I, I'm, there's gonna be very few opportunities where I have the, the floor now, from now on, as, as superintendent of schools, let me tell you. Valley, Valley View is, is full. There is no additional space, uh, in, in that, uh, building. Gildersleeve has some room to re-designate rooms so that special education would be sharing. Brownstone is where you have, uh, the most of, uh, additional space that could potentially be available. And, and could house multiple schools, but you have to factor in the multiple floors and the, the elevator and some of those rooms that have to be, uh, updated. Because they're still vintage nineteen thirty or forty rooms, like the science room, for instance. So, you, you, to me, you've got an incredible asset in the town of Portland in your, in your four buildings. And four meaning the Portland Secondary School being both middle school and high school. And you also have some potential, as, as we have proven, to generate income from your buildings, as we have demonstrated with, with, uh, having Oak Hill School at Brownstone. I see Oak Hill School potential growing in the, in the future. I see potential for, um, other programming coming into that, to Brownstone School. It is a beautiful building and, and has lots of options for outside groups to come in and, and a revenue generating resource. So that's my platform, but I'm, I, as you know, I'm stepping out and, and Charles will, will handle this and will guide you, uh, very capably, uh, as of July one.
Thank you, Phil.
Any other questions for the Board of Education or the administration? If not, I wanna thank you very much, I think this was a very valuable time. We will be moving on within our departmental budget workshop to public works and other related funds. And as we typically do, we move to our Director of Finance to guide us through that. I believe Bob Shea is also present on the phone and/or on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm here, so.
Susan, uh, I can move on there, sure, did you want to, uh, talk about capital for the Board of Ed at all before that or?
Would be fine, that would be fine.
So just, uh, if we skip ahead to the capital plan. This is page one thirty-five, the new books. This year we have, uh, two hundred and ninety-one thousand total, uh, set aside for the town, general fund and Board of Ed. We have a three thousand for the park airline trail improvements. Townwide computers, we have twenty-eight thousand, townwide revaluation is a year of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. System-wide Board of Ed technology upgrade is sixty thousand. High school, middle school auditorium speakers is eighteen thousand five hundred. We were able to some monies toward the system-wide Board of Ed, uh, securities of eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty thousand for the scrubbers. Um, going to page one thirty-seven, um, you see the, uh, eighteen thousand five hundred, the, that, there's a need for microphone receivers. Um, and, uh, and packs due to the, uh, frequency change that, that is coming, uh, up. And so they need to do an upgrade there. Page one thirty-eight, um, they, the Board of Ed had over a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of security needs and, uh, features. And, uh, they, uh, we were able to put eighteen thousand five hundred in for some, some of the items on the list. Uh, the thirty-eight thousand dollars for the scrubbers, there's numerous scrubbers within the, uh, within the, the SIS school system. There are, all, are all very, very old, um, have been reworked numerous times and, uh, are at this point being costly, extremely costly to maintain. Uh, so there's, uh, some money set aside for that. The sixty thousand has a twenty-eight thousand dollars for an access point project that, the remainder of that project is handled by the E-rate. Um, so some of that funded in the general fund and then, um, some of it's funded by E-rate. There's about five thousand for UPS devices, four thousand five hundred in that number for projectors, five thousand for smart boards and seventeen thousand five hundred for Project Leadaway Labs. So makes up around, you know, in theory, that's what the sixty thousand is. Uh, the parks and rec, the, uh, that is on page one thirty-nine. That is, uh, three thousand dollars, it's usually the monies that we utilize for our consultant, uh, that helps with the airline trail and the complete streets. The park and rec, uh, fund improvements is LoCIP monies, um, generally of the, of the allotment of LoCIP. Um, we generally allocate twenty-five thousand to parks to do their various items that they can do. Page one forty is we have also put some money aside for the municipal parking lots. Um, I know that they're working toward trying to get money set aside for the town hall parking lot, that's a LoCIP, uh, project. Um, page one forty-one is, uh, the sewer plant, that's a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for plant and system improvements. Uh, determined by the director and the, uh, chief operator and their, uh, engineer rate tiers. Um, townwide, we have the, uh, computers and peripherals and equipment that we use to do, um, these types of events that we're doing today, as well as for the employees. As well as we need to set aside money for our replacement of our backup system, which we, um, that, that will have to take more effect in, in twenty, twenty-two. Um, as, as, there's not a lot that we're putting aside for that. Um, and, uh, this year we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the rebuild, so we can award our contract to the rebuild company. We have to have the monies put in place to do that, so we need to do that for this year, um, to be able to award the contract. Uh, the water fund has ninety thousand for water main replacements, uh, twenty-seven thousand to replace a van, uh, ten thousand for mainline valves and twenty thousand for remote readers. And that's the total capital of project plant. The Board of Ed did put, um, a much higher request into, uh, the town and we tried to keep the, in the first welcome budget. The number that was, uh, in the budget was the same number that we utilized last year, but the, uh, Board of Ed had requested a significantly larger dollar amount. Any questions for the Board of Ed or anybody else?
Um, Tom.
Yes.
Well, I have a question, but maybe the Board of Ed might, I don't know, either for you or the Board of Ed. Um, at our last meeting, we, we approved some security upgrades for forty-six thousand five hundred. Um, so these, oh, wait a minute, you're talking here, technology upgrades, never, um.
Yeah, there was the security upgrades definitely, but there's a, there's a list of, uh, that I had received of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand of technology upgrades that they had requested. Um, and, uh, so this is, is it, and it ranges between handheld radios, uh, interior dead zone designs at three different schools, four different schools. Surveillance camera upgrades at the high school, middle school complex. Gildersleeve on, uh, repaired doors, Brownstone repaired doors and high school, middle school on repaired doors. So you're seeing that piece of forty-six thousand was a back component and then eighteen thousand five, uh, trying to whittle some of these very critical security upgrade features.
Okay, so, so then I, is that sixty thousand on page one twenty-eight? Does that include the forty-six thousand five hundred or is that an additional sixty thousand or?
So the sixty thousand has nothing to do with the security upgrades. The, the forty-six thousand five hundred was on the supplemental appropriation, I believe, and then it was eighteen thousand five hundred number. Those are different, you know, they're different projects.
So, if, I'll just chime in if I may, Tom.
Sure, feel free.
And Carl could kick in if he needs to, so to answer your question, uh, Rick, uh, the, the, that eighteen thousand five hundred is additional security money? I, I don't know if you remember, recall, but when I spoke last week, we have a number of security, uh, challenges that we wanna meet. And so we've, 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 you know, Tom has been gracious in, A, giving us some of that, um, that money, um, that you allocated a couple of weeks ago. Um, and additional, um, now additional capital potential for some other projects. So, you know, I, I mentioned that there were multiple projects and Carl could chime in, but, but numerous security issues that we wanna address.
Okay, well, that was my basic question, so what we did in supplemental appropriations was, is a different bunch of security issues than this sixty thousand.
Absolutely.
So the total, Rick, of security upgrades, if this budget gets approved by the selectmen, would be the forty-six five.
Okay.
Plus the eighteen five for security upgrades. Cause the forty-six five has already been approved, correct?
Yes.
And within the budget, if the budget is approved as it's written, would be an additional eighteen thousand five hundred.
The sixty thousand, I believe you're looking at, there is a, is that the technology upgrades?
Right.
Yeah, okay, and I, I didn't, you're right, Tom, so I'm getting myself confused. The sixty thousand is technology upgrades, it's different from the security, the security is up above the eighteen five.
Correct.
Okay.
So the sixty, again, that makes up, uh, seventeen thousand five of Project Leadaway computers, uh, five thousand of smart boards, four thousand five hundred projectors, five thousand of UPS devices. And twenty-eight thousand for an access point project, it's an E-rate funded project that has some funding in the general fund as well. As well as by the E-rate itself. That's the sixty thousand.
Okay.
And there was a sixty thousand in the supplemental appropriation, that was for HVAC upgrades primarily at Valley View.
The new.
Right, okay, um, I'm looking at my notes now from the last time we all met, so, um, my question's satisfied, thank you.
I, I think I just have one question that you spurred, um, at Valley View. For many years, the chimney has had a problem. And there's been a bucket holding water coming from the chimney. Is the dollars associated with any of these upgrades gonna eliminate the bucket?
Um, can I answer that question, this is Carl?
Yes, Carl.
Um, no. That chimney repair, I believe, I don't have it sitting in front of me, that chimney repair would be about sixty-five thousand approximately. Um, what we would do is we would take the chimney and bring it down from its current height. And it would only be eight feet off the roof deck, there's no reason for it to be that high. And there would be no reason for us to continue paying to have that chimney pointed all the time and repaired. The reason why it was that high when the school was built was you, you burned number six fuel. Some people referred to that as bunker and you needed it that high to get the air for, um. What do I, for draft and that, yeah, we no longer need that, drive up the high school driveway. Drive up the high school driveway and you look, when you get to the water towers and you see how high that chimney is, it's only about eight feet off the roof deck. So the way to eliminate that would be to just take the chimney down. To remove the chimney alone is about forty-five thousand dollars. And then, but it gets rid of the problem forever. The additional money would be to repair that eight feet off the roof.
Now, you'll see, you'll see that listed under page one thirty-eight. It's in year twenty, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Under Valley View, it's called chimney improvements for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Tom, you can move on to the next item.
Okay, so I'm going to go back now to the operating, or the, our budgets. So those will be on page fifty-seven is the next budget. So on page fifty-seven is the public works budget. This budget is, has the two full-time employees, the director and the administrative assistant to the director. There is a small increase in this budget, the salaries more or less. And we do have the hazardous waste entities and they had proposed increases in those, in those plans. In the pre, in our, in this fiscal year, obviously we've had, it's been tricky this year holding those events. So we're, we're expecting to see that in twenty twenty-one, the increase that they have proposed. Page fifty-nine. This is our highway department. We had, there have been some retirements in this department. So that, if you look at the increase there, it's not as substantial as it normally is for this department because you have some new, newer, lower cost employees in here. Under the thirty-one thousand is the service contract line. There has been a change in the, kind of the rules. So we need to contract out our, to engage a contractor to provide unsafe and unwanted roadside vegetation. That was something that we're able to do internally and we really aren't supposed to do that any longer internally. That's really the remainder of that budget. That's a one-point-two-two percent increase overall. Page sixty-one is vehicle maintenance. That actually has a negative point five percent reduction there. And this was, we'd like to, we have expected a retirement of a long-term mechanic, Dale Etheridge. He'll be retiring in June of two thousand twenty. We would like to thank him for all his years of dedication and hard work into that department and really keeping all of our equipment safe and on the roads. And he works on, on board the bed, tire departments, towns, all types of, all types of equipment there. So I'd wish him well. We're, you know, we're hoping that some of the, some of the capital authorization that you approved at your last meeting will hopefully, you know, save a little bit of the funding with the police vehicles and, and as well as the, one of the dump trucks to get those replaced. And that's why we're trying to keep the equipment repairs at the same level. Engineering, this is our normal engineering budget here. We have MS four, MS four and stormwater monitoring. Or it's expected to create additional engineering costs. Subdivision and inspection review activity has increased. But this is a budget that we've just tried to increase a little bit at a time as we've, we've had, we've had many years where we've over expended this significantly, but we're just trying to go with a modest dollar value increase in this fund. And it's one of those ones we'll, we'll keep working on as well as watching during the year. Page sixty-five is street lighting. We did see some, some savings within this for our, so we're seeing about a twelve percent reduction in this budget. But we are expecting our, our, our energy rate to go up as our long-term contract that we've had, that was very positive, is, is coming to an end. So we'll have to work on getting another contract on that. The ground maintenance is funded, accounts of page sixty-seven. We have here, we have three employees. We have a one part, seasonal employee. The grounds maintenance supervisor is paid on the Board of Ed side and oversees the employees here. We have the regular payroll is based upon the union contracts. The ground supplies increased four thousand dollars. And that was due to more supplies for the new Route Seventeen complex. So that's the majority of the increase in this was, you had some new employees. So there's some steps that, we had steps where we had been, previous time we had steps, they had been stepped out. So these individuals actually have steps. So you'll see a little bit of an increase there in payroll. And you see the increase for the ground supplies. Page sixty-nine is the town building maintenance fund. We are expecting here a retirement of one of the employees. So that's why the payroll remains relatively flat. Although there's union wage increases, we're expecting to hire this person at a little bit lower level. And the majority, this is a point five increase overall. So this is, there isn't not much else to talk about in this, in this budget. Storm rule on seventy-one, we kept this flat. There was recommended by the department's head to go up in this budget, but just trying to keep the budget flat and we're, we're keeping that, keeping that level as a zero percent increase. So we touched on all the other components of the general fund budget. We had, we had approved the water and sewer budget earlier. So the next line item I'd like to go to is one twenty-two. And that is page one twenty-two, that's the town road fund. So far, the, the governor is keeping this funding of this project. So hopefully that will stay there and hopefully they will continue to fight for that. So good, we utilize this funds to chip, through our chip ceiling program as well as to make some other road improvements as we can, as we can. That's overseen by the Director of Public Works. One twenty-seven is the resource recovery department. Revenue's here, it's a tricky one as, as we've had with the resident bags. It's really the place where you start seeing the shortfall of revenue from the past. And it's, you know, it seems like as the time goes on, a lot of the residents here like to go with the curbside pickup. It just is a little bit more convenient for them. And so you do see a little bit of a drop there in back, you know, if you had sixteen, seventeen there, you'd see a drop in the residential bags. And that's why you see the drop in the revenue estimate there on thirty seventy-five from twenty-nine to twenty-two as we've been around the eighteen thousand mark. So we're being aggressive, hopefully we're going to get to twenty-two, but it's been, it's been a while since that has occurred. You did increase some of your bulky waste numbers. So hopefully we'll be able to meet that sixty-seven thousand number. We are keeping the transfer in from the general fund at about the same as trying to minimize the effect on the general fund. Cost-wise, the, with the, some of the changes, they've had a little less in overtime. So they're able to lower the overtime by about, about five thousand dollars or so. So the area where you see an increase, it's always an increase in the contractor. See that, the contractor on thirty-one thousand service contracts, who does your brush pickup, has been very, is held, is the price within reason. They had stated that there is an expectation of an increase on that. Obviously, there is, there is much brush in the area. So there's not really as much of a need for them to take it in the revenue. So there's really not a revenue generation for as much as they did. So there is an expectation of an increase on those costs. We have our, we kept our repair line item at the same level. As you can see in the past few years, we've exceeded that. We'll try to continue to work toward that, keeping that level. It is difficult because we did buy the compactor. So those, those have breaks at time to time and, and we have to repair those. You see an increase in the bulky waste expense. That's a direct relationship as the fees go up. You'll see the MS, hopefully that we can follow within the MS, MSW disposal fees. We were within that number before, so hopefully we're going to stay within the number. But the bulky waste, we did have to increase that as, as those fees continually rise. Page one thirty is our building maintenance fund. This one, we've put eighty-two thousand dollars in the past few years. Again, trying to keep the effect on the general fund at a minimum. We allocate forty-one thousand between the town and the board. Some of the nice projects that we were able to complete here on the town side. We did some of the basement doors at the Weaver Center for about ninety, nine hundred dollars. We did the flooring at the Buck Foreman and the Senior Center for about thirteen thousand. We made chimney repairs to company three for seventy, for about eight thousand dollars. We replaced the resource recovery boiler for about eleven thousand five forty-one. On the Board of Ed side, the Board of Ed made nice improvements to the offices at the ceiling at the Gildersleeve School for about twenty-three thousand. There was a component of the twenty-two thousand three D five for the Portland High School Learning Cafe of the, you know, doing some of the architecture for the new flooring and redesign of that area. There was a vertical lift for eighty-six hundred dollars that was improved upon. And the pneumatic Quincy air pressure at Gildersleeve, compressor at Gildersleeve for ten thousand four oh seven was taken care of. So that was a, we do try to get as much accomplished as possible and use those monies effectively. So that is always a good item there. That's one where the Board of Ed, if they have opportunity at the end of the year, they often will request a transfer in to that, to that budget. And that's something that's where they can do some of those lesser repair improvements to the schools. And we have been able to do many of those projects over the breaks and over the various school years and many of the upgrade projects that we were able to work on. I think I've hit the areas that we had not discussed. So is there any questions on any of the ones that I spoke of today?
I don't hear any questions.
Well, Susan, if you are, thank you.
We need to move on to parks and recreation. I think Nate Foley is on the line. And we can move to the park and recreation department, which is page one thirty-two. And as we all know, we're not certain what the summer will bring. But as you can see, we do have, excuse me, plans, of course, for the summer program in this budget. And there's revenues as well as expenditures associated with that. You can see on page one thirty-three, the teen payroll is estimated to be ninety thousand. That's the area that I know Nate has been planning for, but we're uncertain as to how that will work out this summer based on the COVID nineteen situation. So in terms of our revenues, we do have a transfer in to this fund, which is on page one thirty-two. And the transfer in is two hundred thirty-eight thousand fifty dollars. The total charges for services that come from the programming is a hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred. And together that equals four hundred one thousand one hundred fifty dollars, which is a one-point-two-two percent decrease year over year from the current year till next year. I just wanted to point out, after speaking with Nate a number of times, his programming is as presented, but of course it'll depend on the COVID nineteen plans going forward. Nate, did you, I don't know whether Nate is able to be on Zoom and yes, he is, so I'll let you. Thank you.
Yep, this is Nate Foley. And as you mentioned, so much of our programming and our staffing, revenue and budgeting is being affected right now by the COVID nineteen situation. We're completely up in the air right now with how summer is going to run. I'm sitting in on weekly meetings. I've sat in on some with early childhood as well as other recreation and Parks Association conferences. And a lot of departments and organizations who run a large portion of summer programs are all in the same boat right now. So with the expected budget, we are hoping that we're able to have our staff on board, our seasonal staff, and we're hoping we're able to generate the revenue from our summer camp programs as it is our highest revenue generator. However, with the way things are looking right now, and hopefully they clear up a bit moving forward over the next month or so. But we've been holding off on our registration even at this point. Just because I, we have not received any inquiries about camp running. I think everybody's hesitant to start that registration process, hesitant to put their money into a program to then find out it might not be happening based on restrictions and whatnot from higher government and the state officials. So as of now, we are planning and hoping for things to resume and start running somewhat normal over the summer. But a lot of it is up in the air. We're looking to continue doing online programs at this time. And we're looking towards holding our normal rentals down at Riverfront if that's able to reconvene. Our rentals don't really start up until the end of May. So fortunately, we've only had to make one rental cancellation at this time. But as far as program cancellations in general, we have a hand, we have had a handful that were supposed to happen at the beginning of April that we reluctant, or we had to cancel. And most of our other program opportunities were just postponed. And hopefully we'll pick back up in the next couple of weeks to a couple of months.
Hey, Nate. Tom, I was there. One of the, at our last meeting that we had, that we had gone over this park and rec budget, there was a question from Lou Parr. And his question was on the softball fees. What is the six thousand dollars in revenue? What does that cover? How do you, what do you charge those, you know, the users of the softball? What, what makes up that? I don't believe it's the use of the field, but what makes that up, the six thousand?
The, the six thousand or any revenue generated by that program is based on the amount of teams we have. So we need to purchase softballs. We need to consider light charges. We need to consider trophies for mid, end, the end of season. Supplies that are associated with the field maintenance. And all those charges, we basically tally up and total out. And then based on if we have seven teams, those charges are divided amongst the seven teams. If we have nine teams, those charges would be divided amongst nine teams. So it all comes down to how many players and teams we're able to break out over the course of. So it all comes down to how many players and teams were able to break out over the course of the season.
Thank you.
Any questions from the selectmen for Nate?
What are, um, for Nate, just because this is kind of new to me, what are the program fees? Um, you have adult and youth program fees? Like, what are, what are some examples of those programs?
So primarily, our adult programs, our adult fitness oriented classes such as yoga, zumba, tai chi. Um, we do some program, or we were doing some programs through Inner Circle for martial arts. We do some adult golf clinics with Jerry Demora. Our youth programs are primarily our rec basketball. We do tennis programs, we do some soccer, um, just a variety of youth athletics and youth sports. We're currently offering some online art classes, and we're looking to continue that going through the season. Um, just a variety of both athletics and enrichment programs.
Okay, so you're showing a, a small increase in revenue there. Um, do you think those programs are going to be impacted by the, by the virus that we're dealing with?
I, I think they could be impacted, yes. Uh, we had put this together prior to this all kicking off. Um, I'm hoping things clear up and we don't have to worry about that as an impact when this budget kicks into season. Um, but if everything does carry along the way it is right now, I think those programs could be impacted. And that's why I'm sitting in on so many different conferences and meetings with Connecticut Recreation and Parks to see what kind of new and innovative ideas there are to implement more online opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on that item or any other item for tonight? If there is no other item, I will remind the group that there is a public hearing on the proposed budget, May sixth. That's next Wednesday. It starts at seven o'clock, and then our regularly scheduled meeting will convene at seven thirty. So I encourage our viewers and listeners to send in comments and/or attend the meeting by Zoom on Wednesday the sixth. And then I believe it's nineteen and twenty will be our deliberations. And I believe twenty-seven of May will be our final adoption. Are there any questions, or have I made any mistake or left anything out? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Jim Tripp. Lou Paire. Paire, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, eight twenty-five PM, thank you, good night.
Good night, everybody.
And thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.